All right. Recording and all that? All right. All right, we'll call this Board of Supervisors meeting to order. Welcome everybody. We'll start off the meeting with the pledge of allegiance. But one will lead us to the play.
Yes, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all, thank you very much. Chairman Gomez is still recovering from his surgery, so he's on the phone today. That's why he's not here. So I will try to fill in instead and not mess things up. So we'll move on to the next agenda item called the public. Anybody called the public?
Morning, Tony Hines, Public Works Manager. I'd like to introduce you to our new three new employees. We have John Route for facilities. He mainly at the fairgrounds. Colton Darnell be our new mechanic in the fleet shop. And Suzanne Medina will be our cleaner here at the courthouse.
Okay, great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Welcome to the team, welcome to the family.
You're gonna have to get a Phoenix Suns hat.
All right, anybody else called the public? CNN, we will move on to our next agenda item, the Public Health Service District. The Board of Supervisors will convene as the Board of Directors of the Greenly County Public Health Service District and will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors following consideration of the following items. A consent agenda.
Mr. Campbell, I move that we adopt the consent agenda as noted.
All right, been moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. All right, well, we will move on to the next agenda item. We'll reconvene as the Board of Supervisors and go to agenda item three. The Flood Control District, the Board of Supervisors will convene as the Board of Directors of the Greenly County Flood Control District and will reconvene as the Board of Supervisors following consideration of the following item. A consent agenda.
Mr. Campbell, I move that we approve the flood district agenda as noted.
United States of America.
All right, been moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right.
Aye, motion passes. All right, we'll reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. So we'll go to agenda item four, Dorser Frye Mount Graham Safe House. Discussion action regarding the safe house request for the county to help because construction building of building they had for modular home for a new location for the Mount Graham Safe House Greenly location. Please step on up, that's you.
Well, I think I wrote a letter that explained what we are wanting. But Derek asked me to talk about what we do at the Mount Graham Safe House. And this show, this one that's going to be in Greenly is actually be going to be called the Greenly County Safe House. It's gonna have a separate name. And but we'll still be together. It'll be one entity. So I'm just gonna give you a brief statement about what we do and what our goals are. So since two thousand eight, M G S H has been committed to creating a safe and supportive environment for survivors of domestic and sexual violence in Greenly County, Arizona. Our mission is to empower individuals and families affected by abuse through trauma-informed services that promote healing, stability, and long-term self-sufficiency. But they've been trying to get a shelter in Greenly since two thousand eight. As soon as Jeanette Aston took over as the director, it was her goal to to provide a shelter here in Greenly County. And this, we just had the hardest time, you know, finding a building, finding a property that was within our means that we'd be able to purchase. And I started this three years ago now, I think it's been. I've been, I've been working on this project. We've had a lot of setbacks. We've had a lot of great steps forward. Greenly County has really stepped up. There's some amazing individuals in your county and that have been so helpful. I, this is exciting for me. This is the first time I've ever done a project development and I didn't have any clue what I'm doing. I still don't, but I'm doing my best. And we've been given a lot of support here in Greenly. Sheriff Ellison has been a big cheerleader for us and he's guided me through this. He's been so much help. But this is what we offer. Program, we provide comprehensive client-centered support designed to meet the unique needs of each individual. We don't just have a client come in and say, okay, so you come in, you get your advocate. We give you referrals, you know, these referrals are guided for them. We let them drive their own bus, but we give them suggestions. It's their choice on whether they want to make this work or not. And the statistics are that a woman or a man who's been in a domestic violence will return at least seven times before they finally make that choice that they're done. Advocacy and case management is personalized support to help clients navigate legal, medical, and social service systems. We provide transportation assistance, ensuring access to critical appointments, services, and safe shelter. And we also transport them to work if that they need that. We have resource referrals connecting clients with community partners for healthcare, employment, education, and other essential needs. We have support groups which are facilitated sessions for survivors and their children to foster healing and care connection. We give five groups during the day, which are based to sexual assault, domestic violence, parenting, baking, cooking, life skills, financial assistance, and then how to, you know, get their bank account going and how to take care of their finances. We also provide groups every evening. The fun groups are in the evenings for the women. And there's also a children's advocate who provides services for the children. At the beginning, I think those, some of those workers will be coming into Greenly to help because I will be the only person working for the, during the week, during the day. And we've got systems set up for that until we can find the funding to provide more help there. Barrier funding, financial assistance to those over to overcome immediate obstacles such as relocation costs, utility deposits, or childcare. But not only do we do that, I can give you some examples of what we've done just within the last few months. We provided one of our clients with a full set of dentures. We provided another client with just her top dentures. We paid for someone's air conditioning in their car to be fixed. We are able to pay like their registration for their vehicles, tires. And like I said, childcare, we've, we were able to have funds to pay for childcare through Boys and Girls Club, or we would pay for it here wherever there's like, if they could find a state licensed babysitter, we would pay for that. We don't always have those funds, but most of the time we do. Housing program referrals, we actually have a housing program in the safe house. It's for homeless and for domestic violence clients that we are able to provide them with housing from anywhere from three months to a year. Usually it's three months depending on how many clients we have on there at a time. Each client is met with compassion and respect and services are tailored to their individual goals and circumstances. Our approach ensures that survivors receive the tools and support necessary to rebuild their lives free from violence. I was a survivor of domestic violence. The shelter wasn't there when I, when I was in Stafford and when it happened to me. And I just left the state to avoid my abuser. Fortunately, we don't have to have clients try to figure out and find a way to get out of the state. If they need that, we do have finances to help buy them a bus ticket if that's what they choose to do, go to their family. But here we're going to have those supportive services. Two months ago, in Stafford, we had fifteen Greenly clients which we gave services to. At least that from ten to twenty every month. It's not they all come to the shelter, but we provide services to Greenland clients. So the need is there. The shelter that we're planning on putting in Greenly in Duncan will have enough room for three families and for one room for single women. Men will still need to go to Stafford if they need to do that. And high, high alert clients will have to go to Stafford. We will only have low, you know, safety here in Greenly. I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. Okay, and if there's anything you need to ask me about or want me to talk about, just ask me some questions.
Absolutely, well, I just had a couple of questions. So, so you're looking for assistance from Greenly County to, to get the pad set up to be able to pour concrete?
Yes.
And also obviously to waive the two hundred dollar fee for the FERC test and?
Yes.
That's, that's easy stuff. You already have a modular building?
We haven't purchased it. We've written the grant and whatever that grant doesn't provide, another donor is stepped up and will come in and fill the gap in that.
And you already?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Sorry, sorry, Ron. You already have the concrete secured and all too?
We do not, but we will, we're, we'll try to figure that out, you know, how we're going to do it. We've, we've, so far we haven't had a problem finding the funding for these. We've had lots of generous donors and including Greenly County. And we have the money for our fence, we have the money. We paid for the properties by doing fundraisers. And let's see, we've, I can't even think of all the things we've secured so far. But you have been a big vital role in helping make this happen.
And I want to continue with that. So anyway, yeah, I think it's an amazing organization. I know that, I know the work that the Mount Graham Safe House has done in Stafford and, and you've been a part of that for a long time. And to be able to bring that to Greenly County, I think is a basic accomplishment. And what's needed here, so appreciate that.
This vice chairman?
Yes.
I have checked with the health department and they, they can waive that fee for nonprofits. And we'll do so in this instance. I've also visited with David Manous, our road supervisor. They have the ability, the capacity to build the pad just after the fair. Once we get, let's get the, that fire put out, then they'll have some time after the fair to do that.
Great, absolutely, a couple of weeks, so that's right.
I was gonna ask also, is, is, do you have a timeline to have the pad built and such like that?
No, because we're waiting to see if we've gotten this grant. So after the fair would be more than, you know, acceptable. We're not, and we will wait, we waited this long, we want it done right. So, you know, even if we were to receive the grant and everything wasn't in place to get that ordered, but it takes some, some time to get modular homes ready to place the order. So I think everything should fall in line. I was shooting for Christmas because I thought that would be amazing, but we may not make it for Christmas, but that's okay. As long as it happens.
There'd be some time after the fair to get the pad built.
It's fine.
A couple of months or?
Yeah, yeah, that's, we're more than happy with that.
So great, Chairman Gomez, do you have any questions?
Well, I will, she was pretty detailed on her project and everything. And I've had a conversation with Dorser in the past and she's worked very hard to get to this point. That's, and I applaud her for that.
Thank you.
Absolutely, and, and, and I was step one and, and please, you know, please come back to us as it, as it continues on and, and you're ready to open. We love you.
Well, you're all going to be there hopefully on the day that it opens because we're gonna do a big tour and a party. Yeah, we're excited.
Well, it's great, nice, people like you and, and, and people like that have done this in, in Greenly County and, and just, just nobody like Kathy Grimes that I've done with you know, down there, you know, building the house of hope and all that stuff. You use her as a resource because obviously she knows how to get that done. So she might be a great project manager, but?
Yeah, we went to high school together.
Okay, well, that's great. Well, sir, thank you, thank you very much.
Oh, you're so welcome, thank you, we really appreciate you guys.
All right, well, entertain for, for a motion on the agenda item to report.
I move that we is the Greenly County help with the construction and building of the pad for the modular home for the new location of the Mount Graham Safe House in Greenly location.
And I think we would add waiving of the
And?
Two hundred dollar fee for the FERC test.
And the waiving of the fee for the two hundred dollar fee for the FERC test for the septic being waived.
Excellent. Well, have a motion back here, sir.
And I second that motion.
Excellent, all right, been moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. All right, well, thank you very much. All right, we'll move into agenda item five, Tony Hines, discussion action to award the bid for the construction of the ball field at the Greenly County Fairgrounds.
Mr. Vice Chairman, before we go into this, you'll notice the bottom of the agenda, there's a provision that allows us to go into executive session. I would ask that we go into executive session for some legal advice on this agenda item.
Okay.
It'll of course take a motion by the board to do so. There's a couple of things that we need to clear up.
All right, well, then we are going to entertain for a motion to go into executive session to get the legal advice from our county attorney.
I, I, I move that we go into executive session for further advice from our attorney.
All right, been moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. So now we're gonna go into executive sessions. Apologize. Well, you guys are gonna have to leave for a bit. Well, you guys are gonna have to leave for a bit. Absolutely. Well, I I just had a couple of questions. So so you're looking for assistance from Greenland County to to get the pad set up to be able to pour concrete?
Yes.
And also obviously to to waive the two hundred dollar fee for the FERC test and
Yes.
That's that's easy stuff. Um you you already have a a modular building?
We haven't purchased it. We've written the grant and whatever that grant doesn't provide. Another donor i- is stepped up and will come in and fill the gap in that.
And you already?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, Ron. Um you already have the concrete secured and all too?
We do not, but we will. We're we'll try to figure that out, you know, how we're going to do it. We've we've uh so far, we haven't had a problem finding the funding for these. We've had uh lots of generous donors and um including Greenland County. And we have the money for our fence, we have the money. Um we paid for the property by doing fundraisers. And let's see, we've I can't even think of all the things we've secured so far. But you have been a big vital role in helping make this happen.
And I want to continue with that. So anyway, yeah, I think it's an amazing organization. I know that I know the work that the Mount Graham Safe House has done in Stafford and and you've been a part of that for a long time and um to be able to bring that to Greenland County, I think is a the basic accomplishment. And what's needed here, so appreciate that.
This vice chairman?
Yes.
Um I have checked with the health department and they they can waive that fee for nonprofits. And we won't do so in this instance. I've also visited with David Manus, our road supervisor. They have the ability, the capacity to to build the pad um just after the fair. Uh once we get let's get the that fire put out, then they'll have some time after the fair to do that.
Great. Absolutely. A couple of weeks. So that's right.
I was gonna ask also, is is do you have a timeline to have the pad built and such like that?
No, because we're waiting to see if we've got this grant. So after the fair would be more than, you know, acceptable. We're not and we will wait. We waited this long. We want it done right. So, you know, um even if we were to receive the grant and everything wasn't in place to get that ordered, but it takes so some time to get modular homes ready to place the order. So I think everything should fall in line. I was shooting for Christmas because I thought that would be amazing, but we may not make it for Christmas, but that's okay. As long as it happens.
There'd be some time after the fair to get the pad built.
It's fine.
A couple of months or
Yeah, yeah, that's we're more than happy with that.
So great. Uh Chairman Domas, do you have any questions?
Well, I will. She was pretty pretty detailed on her project and everything. I've had a conversation with her since the past and she's worked very hard to get to this point. Uh that's and I applaud her for that.
Thank you.
Absolutely. And 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 I was step one and and please, you know, please come back to us as it as it continues on and and you're ready to open. We love you.
Well, you're all going to be there hopefully on the day that it opens because we're gonna do a big tour and a party. Yeah, we're excited.
Well, it's great. Nice. People like you and 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 people like that have done this in in uh Greenland County and and uh just just nobody like Kathy Grimes that I've done with down there, you know, building the house of hope and all that stuff. You use her as a resource because obviously she knows how to get that done. So she might be a great project manager, but
Yeah, we went to high school together.
Okay, well, that's great. Well, sir, uh thank you. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're so welcome. Thank you. We really appreciate you guys.
All right, well, entertain for uh for a motion on the agenda.
I move that um we is the Greenland County help with the construction and building of the pad for the modular home for the new location of the Mount Graham Safe House, the Greenland location.
And and I think we would add um waiving of the
And
two hundred dollar fee for the FERC test.
And the waiving of the fee for the two hundred dollar fee for the uh FERC test for the septic um being waived.
Excellent. Well, uh have a motion.
And I second that motion.
Excellent. All right. Then moved and seconded all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. All right. Well, thank you very much. All right, we'll move into Agenda Item Five, Tony Hines, Discussion Action to Award the Bid for the Construction of the Ball Field at the Greenland County Fairgrounds.
Mr. Vice Chairman, um before we go into this, uh you'll notice the bottom of the agenda, there's a provision that allows us to go into executive session. Um I would ask that we go into executive session for some legal advice on this agenda item.
Okay.
Um it would of course take a motion by the board to do so. There's a couple of things that we need to clear up.
All right. Well, then we are going to entertain for a motion to go into executive session to get the legal advice from our county attorney.
I I I move that we go into uh executive session um for further advice from our attorney.
All right, been moved and seconded all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. So now we're gonna go into executive sessions. Apologize. Well, you guys are gonna have to leave for a bit. All right, well, we're back into. Regular session, uh, the board received um. The legal advice regarding the two bids received for the uh. Landscaping proposal for the ball fields, uh, one was. Sent in as a sealed bid, one was sent in uh, as an email. We verified that. Neither. Bidders were able to see each bid, uh, so we find that it's immaterial, non-conformant deviation from specification. Um. And I'm gonna move to me. Move forward with accepting the two bids as received.
And I second that motion.
All right, been moved and seconded all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. All right, now we're gonna move into back into agenda item five. Discussion action to award. A bid for the construction of the ball field at the Green County Fairgrounds. We have two qualifying bids and Tony, it's all yours.
Not on that.
Well, I I do have a question. So the specifications that were sent to both of these were. A hundred percent. I mean, they were the same. The scope of work was the same that was sent to both of these and their proposals reflect. Their adherence to our script.
Correct, and we did have a bid meeting and all the correspondence that happened after that bid bid meeting went between all three of us.
Okay.
So nobody was blindsided by anything on it at all.
Okay.
So the two bids that we had were for from Curtis Landscaping and Peterson Landscaping. Uh. Curtis came in at four hundred and fifty-five thousand, two seventy-eight. And some change. And Peterson came in at two sixty-five, five even. If we. Been out to Loma Linda, we know that. Peterson does a pretty decent job. It looks good out there. Um. But I would recommend more Peterson.
Just as information, Mr. Campbell, I went out and walked the field yesterday. Uh, spent some time out there with the Peterson installation.
Oh, it's low.
And uh, looked at the sprinkler system and how that was all hooked up and um. Took some measurements. I don't. I don't know if I'm a little bit too retentive there. But uh, I I agree with Mr. Heinz. It was. Put in very well.
Excellent. Any other comments? Uh, Mr. Chairman, do you have any comments?
I have one last. I have one. I have one question too, uh, Mr. Heinz. So they are aware kind of. Our time window and what we're shooting for too.
Yeah.
Right?
Yep.
So if if you could please continue with that with with whoever. Is awarded this, if they could. Um, continue to remind them and um. Coach them up that we're looking for first of February for. Completion.
Play ball.
Yes.
Okay, well, with that, uh. If there's no other discussion or questions, then I entertain for a motion.
I move um. That we award the bid. For the construction of the ball field at the Greenlee County Fairground. For the one ball field. Um, to Peterson Construction. And the amount. Peterson Landscaping, thank you, Ron. And the amount of two hundred sixty-five thousand dollar, two hundred sixty-five. Um. Five hundred, two hundred sixty-five thousand, five hundred dollars.
All right.
And I second that motion.
All right, been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, proceed to vote. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. And get it done, Tony.
Thank you very much, Mr. Heinz.
Thank you. All right, move into agenda item six, Derek Fear, County Administrator and beyond, passing the other part of the board. Do discuss the county and state budget legislative issues and then the calendar and events.
On the budget and legislative issues, there's not much going on. Uh, it is somewhat of a obviously quiet season. Uh, you will have noticed no doubt that statewide elections are starting to gear up already. Uh, people are signed up to run for governor and and. Congressman and so forth. So those are are happening. Our biggest thing on the agenda right now in the in the near horizon is the CSA Legislative. Uh. Conference where CSA will decide on the the supervisors. Legislative agenda for next legislative session. Um, we covered the proposals. There's not been any more meat put on the bones yet. Uh, we expect to be briefed on that at our meeting on. Uh, next week for the managers and the following week for the Board of Supervisors. Um, procedurally, I would simply ask that if you're not planning on attending that conference, make sure you get your proxy into Penny at CSA. And likewise, uh, if if there's specific instructions on specific things. You can, I mean, if you give a proxy, you've given the ability for that other person to vote for you. It's not necessarily restricted to our county, but we've always done it that way. Um, but then again, if you have a specific instruction on a particular piece of legislation, please vote no on this. Vote yes on that. Make sure that whoever you give your proxy to knows how you feel about it. So that's just procedural stuff, but other than that, we'll cover those uh. Proposals in greater depth, perhaps in our next meeting, but certainly our first meeting in October.
Uh. Mr. Chairman, are you are you planning to attend? The CSA?
You know, I registered, but I I decided that I was gonna cancel out. Yeah. Unless unless things change. When when we get closer to it, I I'll make my final decision, but I have called into Penny and tell her to to uh. De-register me for now.
Okay.
I I'm planning on attending, yes, sir.
You are.
The October.
Yeah, all right. And I I won't be in attendance, but. Okay, well, good. Well, then we'll move on. Is that all?
That that's all I have, yes.
We'll move on to calendar and events. You all go.
Next week. The twelfth is the county uh, county managers meeting. Our next board meeting is on the sixteenth, equal small counties on the seventeenth. And then CSA on the eighteenth. The county fair does start on the eighteenth and it runs through the twenty-first. That's all. That's in September unless the board has something to add. Nope. Going into October, our first board meeting is on the seventh. Um, our offices are closed. On the thirteenth, Columbus Day. Second board meeting on the twenty-first and the CSA summit, the twenty-eighth through thirtieth. That is in Yuma. Um, that's all I have for October unless the board. Was to add in October. Um. Going into November, the fourth is our first board meeting of the month. Veterans Day, October eleventh, our offices are closed. Fourteenth, Friday, county managers, our second board meeting on the eighteen. Eco and small counties, Wednesday, the nineteenth, and CSA on the twentieth. Um, our offices are closed on the twenty-seventh for Thanksgiving. And that is all I have.
I said two things. So on November the eighth, that is gonna be our. Eighth annual suicide awareness walk up in Maritzee. Uh. And then I also had a question on. On the fourth. Being the election day. We need to move that meeting.
We don't have elections.
Oh, yeah.
And yeah, we have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just wanna make sure.
For our county, we do not have elections.
Excellent.
What time's the suicide awareness walk, Ron?
It'll start at nine. Nine AM. All right. Appreciate and welcome all participants. Okay, anything uh, for the calendar, Mr. Chairman?
No, I don't have anything.
Okay. You know.
No, sir.
All right, well, thank you very much. We'll move into agenda items seven, the consent agenda. Anything uh, earth shattering? There?
No. No.
I move that we adopt the content consent agenda as written.
I second that motion.
All right, been moved and seconded all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. All right, we went to agenda item eight supervisor reports. Mr. Chairman, do you have any report?
I don't have anything to report at this time. Thank you for putting up with me.
It's all good. This work?
Uh, just a small report. Uh, we had the opportunity to go up to the blue a week ago Saturday. Um, had chance to talk to the Cattle Growers Association. And to the constituents up there. It was a wonderful. Meeting, um, got to go with sheriff and with Mr. Austin Adams, um. Great time to be able to meet them, meet the people up there and to be able to. Um, have a meal with them. So I very much enjoyed that. Look forward to going up there again. And uh. Spending time with them and helping them through their challenges and their. Uh, positive. Things happening up there. So that's my report. Thank you.
Well, I just want to say I appreciate you attending. Normally that's something that I look forward to every year to attend, but uh. Was moving my daughter into college, so I had to deal with. Multiple things together and you know, then taking care of the. The wife as she's crying on the way home, so. But anyway, uh, it sounded like it was a good meeting up there and and I. Really enjoy uh, getting up there. Thank you for attending, and I said. All right, well, then. With that, uh. Nothing else, we'll move to agenda item nine, which is adjournment, adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
For you, Ron. Thank you, David. Take care, get better.
Be take care of yourself, David.
All right. What about you?
You too.